Call to order the July 27th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Smith for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. We have staff requests to remove Discussion Item 4, which is the fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, Annual Action Plan Funding Recommendations. So that proposed list of projects can be considered within the context recommended of the recommended Annual Action Plan at the August 10th meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no recognitions, reports, and presentations this evening, so we'll move right to Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at Public Speaks Out on the printed agenda. And if you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I would ask that you take seat, a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. And that works to your advantage because you get more time in a public hearing. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers, I will interrupt you once you hit the three minutes. There is a timer on the podium, and when the timer turns from green to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when it turns from yellow to a flashing red, that's when I'm going to interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. To be efficient at Public Speaks Out, we ask that groups have a spokesperson to speak on behalf of a group and to reduce repetitive comments and remembering that we have only a one-hour time limit. So if you would like to speak at this time in Public Speaks Out, I would ask that you line up to my right, if there's more than two or three of you, and then, one at a time, approach the podium. I thank everyone in advance for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from the meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening.
Hi. Evening.
It's really rough when you pray, okay? Everybody's staring at me. I hope the stairs go well. You know, and the next thing I want to say is, we've got to stop meeting like this. So, my name is Sharon Tobias. I live in Scottish Hills. I have spoken to you before about the Trimble rezoning, and I'm glad that's over with. And I want to clarify where I fall in that project. Our eight is fine. I'm good. Life is grand. Let's move on. I do have some concerns, though, about, I understand CDBG has been tabled, or whatever the official word is for tonight, but I do want to give you a few thoughts to consider as you ponder and move forward over the next couple of weeks. It is a resource that can help a lot of people with good stewardship, and it's a difficult decision, and we need to take a step back and look at the direction one particular project is heading. And I specifically address Habitat's request for another $132,000. So, sometimes records are a little confusing. It was $50,000, and then I think at one point what we pulled up showed it was over $340,000 for additional money, and now we're down to $132,000. But I was the person who brought to light at the Town Council meeting for the rezoning how the money had grown and the project had shrunk, and what's our accountability. And I also brought to your attention that in the paperwork submitted to you, Habitat said they needed the money to ensure the project moved forward. And I believe it was asked that night, can you move forward without the money? And I quote Habitat, "I would say that," let me do this right, "I would say that you know the contingency, the ability to do the project is contingent on us getting funds, and so we have numerous sources of funds, and so that's one option for us." And I think that's a really important quote. Habitat has a history of coming back to the town asking for more money, and with lots of considerations to make to truly further all the causes supported by CDBG money. Is this an answer from an organizational representative that is looking at this process from the perspective of the greater good? Through due process, the project no longer resembles the scope of the initial project, yet it continues to look for ongoing monies. Would it truly rank on the point scale used for evaluation? Or yet, one wonders how the project continues to leverage strength for another $132,000. We went from 26 units to seven units of affordable housing, and we've gone from $282,000 to over $400,000. There are other organizations that have been told no, that do great things in the town. Is the spirit of the process based on eligibility or need? With assets in the end of fiscal year 16 of $22.2 million, is what Habitat has, I would say there are other organizations in a position of need. The bottom line in this situation is about an organization with the resources to move forward. There is a greater good when, based on the words of this organization, they can move forward and this money can go on to be used to help others through organizations that have proven in need with a mission to serve citizens.
I'm sorry, your time is expired.
I'm done. That was good timing.
Thank you.
Last word, Rithling?
Next speaker for Public Speaks Out, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
Hi, I'm Jessica Uller, and I live at 1207 Bell Memorial Drive in Scottish Hills. Habitat for Humanity originally planned to build 23 townhomes on the Trimble Avenue land, and has been granted $282,000 in community development block grants so far. Instead of finding a place to make the funds go as far as they can and serve 23 families, they have chosen to build up to seven and are now in need of more funding. Kevin Campbell stated at the June 22nd rezoning meeting that Habitat has other sources of funding, and this is backed up by their financial statements that show over $20 million in assets. I am asking council to instead fully fund the other 20, other affordable housing organizations that may not have the assets and other funding sources that Habitat does, and that would make a greater impact on people in need. The following organizations' requests could be fully funded with the $135,000 that staff has recommended for Habitat. Resources for Seniors, $20,000. Rebuilding Together, $10,000. Tammy Lynn Foundation, $20,000. The Carrying Place, $80,187, which is listed as receiving no money but has a waiting list of over 360 families and receives 300 homelessness-related requests per month. I also want to point out that on Wickham Place, where 17 single-family homes were built by Habitat for Humanity in 2003, two were sold. 517 in 2013 and 518 in 2011 to a for-profit company, and thus are now unavailable to serve their original intent of affordable housing. Please take this into consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Darryl Neal. I'm with the International We Love You Foundation, and it is my great pleasure to speak to all the members of the council here today about the International We Love You Foundation. Founded in 2001 by Chairwoman Zhang Gilzha, We Love You is a nonprofit that promotes unity and friendship among all people of the global village, beyond nationality, race, religion, and socioeconomic status, through impactful environmental and social welfare initiatives carried out with the heart of a mother. We Love You makes a difference in people's lives in more than 50 countries by carrying out life-saving blood drives, rebuilding homes after natural disasters, providing clean water to thirsting communities, educating tomorrow's youth on the importance of maintaining a clean environment, and much more. Just this past week, We Love You volunteers were presented with a citation from the mayor of Hempstead in Long Island, New York, for their work in maintaining a clean environment in Long Island. We also featured in Newsday, a local newspaper for Long Island and New York City. Our goal here in Cary is to work together with our local government to improve the lives of our community members, whether by carrying out environmental protection work or addressing any other need in the community. We look forward to speaking more in detail with you about how we can work together for the better of the Cary community. So, in the Cary area, actually, our headquarters is in New Jersey, but we have members who are in North Carolina, and we want to carry out various different types of volunteer services inside of Cary in order to better improve Cary as a community. You know, so, we're just saying that we're here, and we're hoping that we can be used for service in Cary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Hector Escobar, and I live in the Scottish Hills. I'm glad you're all okay. I kind of miss this microphone, because every time I speak over here, I speak my heart out, so, you know. But anyway, first, I want to congratulate you for, basically, to sign a good budget for the town of Cary. That shows that we live under our means, that we don't try to overspend something that we don't have. Isn't that nice, that everybody will live by those rules? You know, just spend what they can afford. Habitat for Humanity, I thought this was a done deal when they got what they want, but now they come back for more money. I know we cannot control what they want, but the money that you have, you can. It's the federal government. But before, it was federal government, it was our money. It's taxpayers' money. I am here to strongly bow against any more money to Habitat for Humanity. I would appreciate if you give that money to senior affordable housing, because I think it's a noble cause. Seniors sometimes are the most vulnerable people. They don't have the ability, or physically, they can't sometimes find a job. So what do they do? They only live under the Social Security check, which sometimes is not really much. I think if we can help out the seniors, rather than somebody else that can really find another job and work harder, seniors can. There's no other sources of money for them. So I would appreciate if you consider then, rather than somebody else who is always asking for more and more, and when is the end of it? So please, consider that, and hope to see you again sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I live at 1213 Bell Memorial Drive. I actually agree with letting Mr. Campbell have this money, provided that he himself signs a contract stating that this $135,000 that he said last month that they did not need will go strictly for the improvement of the flooding zone, that those poor houses and those poor Habitat people will have flooded yards, not to mention all the neighbors who are going to have flooded yards. The money needs to go towards the retention pond that the town of Cary has very nicely given him the land for. It needs to go to a pump that we were told would take the water from the retention pond up to the stream that goes under the road. That pump will need to be paid for. It will need to be repaired. It will need to be maintained. And it will fail every time we lose power with every tropical storm and hurricane we get. And North Carolina is the state with the third-most tropical storms. Also, the money should also go for widening the road and for a law fund for when people's homes are flooded and they turn to the city of Cary for the retention pond not working. So if he is agreeing to spend all the money that Cary has, will add to what they have already given, then maybe we ought to consider it. Otherwise, there are more needing groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one will close Public Speaks Out, and we move to our consent agenda. For the benefit of people watching on TV, I'll take a moment to review the consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items on the consent agenda. We have minutes. 17REZ09, that's 7425 Wake Road and Associated Consistency Statement. Ratification of Resolutions for Hillstone at Alston Town Center Parking Reduction and Twin Lakes Center Sketch Plan. Cary Parkway Extension Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Condemnations for ST 1237 Reduced Congestion Through the Intersection Improvements Project. Would council members like any of these hold for discussion?
No, thank you.
If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings. That applied to Public Speaks Out, with one exception, instead of three minutes to speak, we now have five minutes to speak. Our first public hearing is 5.1, which is 17A07 Deco Properties LLC Annexation. Mr. Nicholas will introduce this item. The item will be brought back to council at a future meeting for action. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This request is for annexation of two separate properties totaling 5.72 acres located on NC 55 Highway. One of the properties is located in the southeast corner of the NC 55 Highway Marshall Carpenter Road intersection. The other is about 900 feet south of the intersection. Annexation will also include .8 acres of adjacent right-of-way. Properties are located within Cary's ETJ and are contiguous to the existing corporate limits. Property located at the intersection is owned general commercial conditional use. The other property is owned office research and development conditional use. Request is associated with the development plan for the infrastructure that will serve future office, commercial, and retail uses on these lots. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for 17A07 Deco Properties LLC Annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, and as Mr. Nicholas said, we will see this at a future meeting for action. We now move to our second public hearing. It's going to have two items in it. 17A08 3500 Arthur Pierce LLC, Glenys M. and Guy Dale Young Annexation, and 17REC17 Arthur Pierce Road rezoning. These will be held together, heard together at this public hearing. Ms. Dry will introduce the items, and council will not take action on the rezoning nor the annexation this evening. The rezoning will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation, and then both items will return to the council at a future meeting. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, council. For your consideration as a request to rezone and annex 22.4 acres at 3500 and 3512 Arthur Pierce Road. To rezone a portion of 3512 Arthur Pierce Road. The site actually is on both sides of Arthur Pierce Road, and they're proposing to annex just the southern portion to the south side of Arthur Pierce Road. There's also a one-acre lot in the middle of the 3500 site is 3512 Arthur Pierce Road. That's included in the rezoning as well. So again, it'll include this site in yellow, as well as the one-acre site within it, and not the portion across the street. The site's currently developed with two detached dwellings, one here and one on the one-acre piece of property. There's also an existing cell tower on the site. The Cotswold subdivision is located here to the west, and the Glenn Mint Stone subdivision is to the south. Since the property is in Wake County jurisdiction, annexation into Cary is required in order to apply for Cary zoning. The areas on this map, which are shaded in yellow, are areas which are within the town's existing corporate limits. The current zoning for the property is Wake County Residential 30, and the applicant's requesting to rezone the property to transitional residential conditional use. The zoning change would keep the land use as residential, but would allow an increased density up to, to allow up to 50 lots and a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The applicants propose the following conditions for the site. First, to limit the use to detached residential and neighborhood recreation. They're also proposing age restriction on the housing to limit to 55 and older. They're proposing a maximum of 50 lots. They're proposing to increase the minimum lot size to 6,000 square feet. The minimum lot size for TR is 5,000 square feet. They're proposing to increase the minimum lot width to 50 feet, and the minimum in TR is 40 feet. They're also proposing to increase the minimum community gathering space to 10,000 square feet. The minimum requirement for a site of this size is 5,000. The Town of Cary's Land Development Ordinance requires the following buffers to be applied to the site if it were developed with the rezoning that's being, or the zoning district that's being proposed. 30 feet, 30-foot buffer type B, which is a semi-opague buffer along the property lines to the south, to the west, and essentially all the property lines which touch existing residential properties. There would also be a requirement for a 50-foot type A opaque streetscape along the frontage for Arthur Pierce Road. As the case progresses, staff will be evaluating the rezoning with respects to aspects of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. And the aspects for evaluation will include looking at the plan policies and the site's future growth framework designation. A preliminary evaluation of the plan has been conducted, and a review of all the plan policies that are applicable are included in the staff report. Some of the policies that were applicable dealt with looking at the housing type, infill for the site, the type of housing proposed, and density. This case is also proposing a condition to limit residents of the units to those who are 55 and older, which is directly addressing some of the town policies, which calls for adequate supply of housing for Cary's growing senior population. The Town of Cary's Future Growth Framework Map indicates the development category for the subject property as suburban neighborhood. Suburban neighborhoods are described as consisting principally of single-family detached The subject property also contains a house and four outbuildings, which are listed on Cary's historic and architectural inventory. Of those, a terracotta barn, which is, a picture of which you can see here, has the most historic and architectural significance. Staff, however, is conducting further research, and will have additional information as the case progresses to the Planning and Zoning Board. Also, I'd like to mention the property, the property owner's agent and the developer have worked well with staff to coordinate setting up a time to go out on site and take a look at the barn. According to the Town of Cary GIS maps, the site is impacted potentially by stream buffers. The Parks, Recreation, Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan, which is identified in the Engaged Chapter of the Cary Community Plan, proposes no new public parkland or public greenway on the subject property, but you can see from this map, there's a proposed greenway trail just to the north of the site. According to the Move Chapter of the Cary Community Plan, the Arthur Pierce Road is a thoroughfare, which is anticipated to be improved to a three-lane road section. There was a neighborhood meeting held for this site on June 7th, 2017, here at Town Hall, and questions and concerns and discussion included questions regarding the timeline for the rezoning and proposed development. There was questions about potential loss of trees, also question and discussion regarding drainage and stormwater requirements that the town requires with the LDO. Also, questions around traffic and the type of product being proposed. Properties within 800 feet of the subject site were notified at the public hearing, and the site was posted and legalized or placed in accordance with the Town of Cary LDO. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share comments on the rezoning and annexation. Following that, staff will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, and Ms. Dry did an excellent drive, and Dry did an excellent job going over just about everything I was going to say, so I will try to be brief. First, there was the annexation public hearing. As staff pointed out, the property is in the planning area of Cary, but not in the ETJ, so annexation is required with the rezoning request. The property is in the suburban neighborhood development category. Within each of the development categories, there is a predominant land use and an incidental land use, and the predominant land use for the suburban category is single-family detached large and small lots, and in limited cases patio homes. The use being proposed with this rezoning is single-family detached small lots, so it is in conformance with the definition for the suburban neighborhood development. Staff also went over all the rezoning conditions, so I'm not going to repeat them. I do want to add one point. We did come back after the neighborhood meeting and in listening to the neighbors and also talking with staff, we did increase the community gathering space from the required 5,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. In one of the slides, it showed a cluster of champion trees, and where those champion trees are located, even though it's not within the zoning condition at the moment, that is the area for the gathering space. So we increased the size to ensure that those champion trees will be maintained. With each rezoning, as you all know, it is incumbent upon the applicant to identify those policies within the Cary Community Plan that are applicable to the rezoning. With this one, there are several key policies, and they include the provision of more housing choices for all residents, provision for more housing options in new neighborhoods, support and facilitate redevelopment and infill, provide appropriate transition between land uses, and preserve and maintain Cary's attractive appearance and quality of development. As pointed out in Cary's Community Plan, it does talk about Cary's population and how it's evolving. Cary also has, is a community with diverse households. And one thing that is pointed out in the Cary Community Plan is that Cary's population is aging, and that there needs to be adequate, an adequate supply of housing for seniors. With this rezoning, the condition that limits the housing to age-restricted complies with the policy of providing housing for seniors. It also is increasing the mix of housing in this area, because currently, much of the area around here and the development that has occurred are large lots, single-family development, open to all ages. With this... With this development, again, is being restricted to age-restricted housing. Another thing that is talked about in the Cary Community Plan is in developing areas of Cary, in new areas of Cary, you know, adding additional choices of housing. The suburban neighborhood classification is one of those areas, and the area in the 1010 Arthur Pierce area, there is new development that is occurring. Currently, there is not this type of housing in the area, and one of the things that will happen if this rezoning is approved, it will provide an opportunity for those people that are living in this part of Cary to age in place. Basically, they will be able to live here, and if they're looking to downsize, move into a home that is more appropriate for those that are in their senior years, they can stay here to do that. They will not have to go to other areas of Cary that currently, we know there is a large predominance of those housing types. This would, this would put that housing in South Cary where it doesn't exist right now, and we feel that that's a very, it's very important as a reason for this rezoning. Also want to point out that the zoning conditions helps this development and this proposed rezoning to be compatible with development in the area. Will be complying with all the LDO requirements. There is a undisturbed buffer that will be required adjacent to the residential areas. There's a 50-foot streetscape along Arthur Pierce Road. If you look at the cap of units to 50, the density is 2.2 dwelling units per acre. So although the lot sizes are smaller, the density is in keeping with that area. And if you look at the type of housing that's being offered, what you typically see is a community with smaller lots because the seniors are not, they, they really want to live in a community where there is less maintenance or actually maintenance-free living, so you tend to see smaller lots. And also by increasing the community gathering space and with the density of the way it is, we're also providing green space, open space, that is in keeping with the vision in the suburban development category. Want to add one point. As staff said, we did meet on-site on Tuesday to look at the tobacco barn. Staff is going to do additional research, the, to understand the significance of the tobacco barn. Also, the applicant is going to take a, take a further look at the structural stability of the barn, and, you know, we will continue to work with staff in understanding, you know, what the options are and, and what the feeling is about that barn. So that will be something that we will continue to work with staff on during the process. Again, in summary, the proposed request is in compliance with the Cary Community Plan and the policies within that plan. We ask for council support. I'm here to answer questions, and also there is another person here, if you have questions, is happy to help you also, and thank you for the opportunity to address council.
Thank you, Ms. Top. Now it's time for the public hearing for both annexations 17A08 and rezoning 17REZ17, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. I'll open it up to council members for questions, comments.
I want to thank the applicant for looking at the preservation component of this. My understanding is they have the right experts looking at it, and especially the barn. A terracotta tobacco barn is not something you see every day. So I would hope when the experts' opinions come back, if it looks like it lends itself to preservation, or it looks like it lends itself to a condition, that you would gladly offer one at that time.
Other comments, questions?
What do you really think, Ed?
Seeing none, this will return to council at a future date, the annexation and the rezoning. Thank you, Ms. Dry. We now move to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is the financial agreement for funding of USA Baseball National Training Complex expansion. Mr. McGrany is here with a bat. I can't wait to hear what that's about, and he will present this item, and council may take action. Mr. McGrany.
Somehow I thought a prop would help. All right, so this, this staff report is dealing with the financial agreement between USA Baseball and the Town of Cary. And for over two years, the town has been negotiating with USA Baseball regarding this agreement, and it is regarding an expansion of new facilities at USA Baseball, which will include USA Baseball offices, which will be located near the front of the facility, near that grassy area, I think all of you know when you come in, and then a team rooms and training facility which will be located internal to the facility. I think as most of you know, the National Training Complex was dedicated in 2007 at a cost of $11 million, of which $1 million was from the Wake County Hotel and Occupancy Tax Fund. The facility consists of four major league-designed and-maintained fields, and it features, of course, Coleman Stadium with a 3,500-seat capacity, including 1,700 seats along the berm along the sides. In addition, it has a USA Baseball Team Store, concessions, press box, training room, batting cages. A little bit about USA Baseball. Since 1978, USA Baseball has been the national governing body for amateur baseball, and nearly every natural, national amateur baseball organization in America is united as a USA Baseball National Member Organization. USA Baseball is responsible for promoting and developing the game of baseball on the grassroots level, both nationally and internationally. It governs more than 12 million amateur players and ballparks and playgrounds across the country. And oversees a number of teams ranging from their professional team to various age groups of, from 18 down to 14U in their national development program, along with, actually that's 12U national team, along with the women's national team. The National Training Complex here in Cary has hosted over 700 players during the past decade, of which over 100 have been drafted by Major League Baseball. Notable players currently in the Major League who have played at USA Baseball include the pictures that you have above, which are Jack Arietta, Bryce Harper, Manny Machado, Addison Russell, the Mc Trout. I'm upset because there's a couple Cubs there, but no Indians. But all these players have been, not all, but they've, they've played in the World Series, All-Star Game, and they're considered basically either up-and-coming or superstars in the league, and just points to the potential that Cary citizens can have to see, you know, future Major League players play at the facility here in Cary. USA Baseball represents a sport of the United States as a member of the United States Olympic Committee, and internationally as a member of the Federation of the World Baseball Softball The International Olympic Committee approved in the past Olympics for the return of baseball to the 2020 Summer Olympic Games, and the United States Olympic Baseball Team will train and play at the National Training Complex here in Cary prior to those games. This is simply a list of the range of events that, that the National Training Complex does host. We talked about the national team and, and all the different various age groups, the national teams that USA Baseball brings in. The complex also hosts a National High School Invitational, which is, which includes the best high schools every year that come to Cary to play in a championship. And of course, we've also hosted Division II Baseball Championship for over eight years, and we have another five years that have been promised to Cary between 2018 and 2022. We, of course, also host international games. This past summer, we had both Cuba and Taipei come in to play. The facility is also used for non-baseball events like the Tobacco Road Marathon, and recently, the Fest in the West.
Thank you. That's awesome.
In summary, the annual attendance at the National Training Complex is over 75,000, and the economic impact on Cary has increased over 5 million annual direct visitor spending. Since 2007, the facility has generated over 23 million in visitor spending, and in terms of operating costs, the past three years, the facility's averaged approximately 990,000 in expenses and 530,000 in revenue. And now for the financial agreement. As a reminder, the overall project cost will be 6.4 million, and Wake County will be, will be providing 3.2 million with US Baseball, USA Baseball providing the remaining 3.2 million. The agreement includes, the Town of Cary has agreed to finance the share of USA Baseball over 10 years at 3% interest, and the proposed lease and financial agreement, that's been developed, that's included in the staff report, has been developed to limit the financial impact to the town, and the interest rate set to finance the 3.2 million is based on the expected interest that the capital funding would normally have earned in fund balance. The proposed lease and financial agreement includes costs to cover maintenance and utilities of USA Baseball primary-use office and warehouse space, and for the second 10 years of the lease, USA Baseball will pay a monthly amount, not only to cover maintenance costs and utilities, but also for repairs and replacement of primary systems. Lastly, an annual rent to use the new space will be included in the lease, as is a payment to use the existing fields and the facility that they've been paying over the past 10 years, and this has been set at a level, actually it's been increased, but it's been set at a level that reflects the cost of USA Baseball's annual use of the facility. Now comes the bat. USA Baseball will pay back the advance by the town primarily with funds from licensing fees from bat sales after the implementation of a new baseball bat standard. In 2015, USA Baseball announced in conjunction with participating national member organizations of the American Amateur Baseball Congress, basically it's the overarching group that includes Babe Ruth, Little League, T-Ball, Pony, Cal Ripken, all these groups got together with USA, and they'd all decided to adopt new methods for testing and measuring the performance of youth bats. And this new US Baseball standard, which is called USA Bat, will apply to all bats classified below NCAA and NFHS level of play, and will be implemented starting in January 2018. Basically, here's the bat, and it has a standard barrel of 2.58 inches, and currently now there's two or three different widths of those. It's a standard bat. The USA, all bats will have the USA baseball symbol, and of course, by doing so, they take on the liability, you know, and so that, but, but basically, everyone will have to use this, which means everyone will have to buy new bats, starting, starting in January 2018, and funding from that will then be used to help pay off their portion of the Before I read the recommendation, we will be coming back to council with a project lease and development agreement. With approval of this, then we'll work on a new lease agreement that basically is almost completed for the past 10 years, and we'll probably do that hopefully in the next two months or so, and it'll be a 20-year lease. And staff recommendation is that you would approve the financial terms attached to the current staff report for the project and authorize the mayor or town manager to execute the project finance agreement consistent with the financial terms that are attached to the staff report, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. McGrany.
Is there a Town of Cary version of that bat?
You mean like the word Cary on it?
Maybe.
I can talk to Mr. Seiler.
Be kind of cool since we're the home of USA Baseball, you know?
I did tell staff we had to follow the statement.
I mean, we got to train, so, I mean, bat shouldn't be too hard.
We can, we can, we can talk.
Cool.
Other questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
A second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McGrany.
Thank you, council.
We now move to our second discussion item. It's the NC 540 Morrisville Parkway Interchange and Extension Project. Staff will present this item, and council may take action. Mr. Huber.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm pleased to report we're making good progress on the Morrisville Parkway Interchange and Extension Project. Tonight, we'll provide a utility agreement for your consideration that enhances the benefits of this important project by including water line installations. This project accomplishes, accomplishes a number of goals in our Imagine Cary Community Plan, including completing planned connections for both our transportation and water system networks, improving mobility, providing water system resiliency, preserving our award-winning water quality, and supporting future growth. Before I turn the presentation over to Jamie to provide more details on the utility agreement, we wanted to provide a brief project update. Right-of-way acquisition has recently been completed, and with that, private utility companies are now clearing their easements and relocating lines to address conflicts in advance of the roadway construction. The road work is scheduled to begin in 2018, and with that, I'll turn it over to Jamie Bissonnet to give more details on the agreement.
All right, thank you, Kyle. Good evening, mayor and council. Proposed agreement with NC DOT will cover the installation of 3,000 linear feet of 16-inch water line along the future Morrisville Parkway through its interchange with 540. This water line will accomplish major goals of the System Water, Water System Master Plan by eliminating dead-end water lines, providing a connection across NC 540, and utilizing a section of water line that was installed in 2011. This will improve system redundancy and preserve water quality. Also, bundling the water line work with the road construction provides a larger project and an opportunity for more competitive bids with economies of scale. This also minimizes impacts and simplifies the installation. So in summary, staff recommends that council adopt the attached resolution approving the agreement and appropriate $750,000 to cover the town's cost for the water line improvement. And I will answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We now move to our third discussion item. Is the ordinance allowing the sale of alcohol beverage commonly known as the brunch bill? Assistant Chief Quinlan will introduce this item, and council may take action.
Good evening, mayor and council. As I'm sure you're aware, the state of North Carolina has historically prohibited the sale of alcoholic beverages prior to noon on Sundays. However, on June 30th, Governor Cooper signed into law legislation covering many alcohol distribution and sale laws. As you had mentioned, part of this legislation, which is commonly referred to as the brunch bill, introduced a statute that now authorizes towns to adopt an ordinance allowing alcoholic beverages to be sold on licensed premises beginning at 10:00 a.m. on Sundays. We have heard from a number of our local businesses, our restaurant owners and managers, who have all expressed interest in having such an ordinance. Here in town, we have well over 200 such establishments that either sell or serve alcoholic beverages, and we believe they will all benefit from this ordinance. Such establishments include Crosstown Pub, Southern Kitchen Lucky 32, Academy Street Bistro, excuse me, Dority's Irish Pub, the New Pros Epicurean Market and Cafe, Academy Street Bistro, as well as a number of other locations that are known for their Sunday brunches. Our hotel restaurants, for example, with the Veranda at the Maitland Inn, Harren's at the Umstead, who will have guests visiting our town for either leisure or for business. Grocery stores throughout town will now be able to start selling beer and wine two hour, two hours earlier on Sundays, not to mention all of our convenience stores. Our local breweries, such as Bond Brothers, Fortnight, Jordan Lake, and bottle shops such as pharmacy bottle and beverage located right here in downtown, will be able to all take advantage of this ordinance. Our proposed ordinance language simply states that such licensed premises located within our town limits may sell alcoholic beverages beginning at 10:00 a.m. on Sundays. Several other local municipalities have passed a similar ordinance, Carboro, Wilmington, Carolina Beach, as well as our neighbors Raleigh and Apex, and I just heard yesterday that Morrisville and Holly Springs have also passed an ordinance. We've contacted Apex and Carboro. Neither of their town police departments have reported any issues or change in their service delivery. Basically, a two-hour change that's had no impact, no adverse effects on their communities. And lastly, there's no budgetary impact in making such a recommendation, associated with this recommendation. In summary, staff recommends council adopt an ordinance allowing the sale of alcoholic beverages at licensed premises to begin at 10:00 a.m. on Sundays, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So the only question I would have is just to be clear to everybody that this takes effect. effect this Sunday if we approve this?
This will go effect immediately, yes.
Okay. Other questions, comments, motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Assistant Chief.
Why is it funny? Why is it funny? Why is that?
Our fourth discussion item was tabled until our August 10th meeting, so the only remaining item we have on the agenda is to go into closed session, and I would entertain a motion to go in closed session.
Okay, I'll read it, unless you can.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, pursuant to GS 143-31811A15 and 3, a move that we hold a closed session to instruct the town staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the town in negotiating the price and material terms of contract or proposed contract for acquisition of property owned by Charles Lee Cotton Heirs located at 1408 Wemberley Road, Apex, North Carolina, for the purpose of the water plant expansion. Also, consult with attorneys employed by or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 132-1.2 and/or 143-318.10E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we're now going into closed session.